Hi, so to those of those who are watching the video, just to let you know that we called the meeting to order at six thirty and then went into a recess to do a Q and A with the public. We want to thank everybody who came and asked really thoughtful questions. You know, I think a lot of people in the community are very committed to learning more about this is all about the capital. Project Bond referendum. So we are now back in session and. I don't believe. Oh, actually, I should. I do have one comment.
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, we need to. Shall we? Okay, let's do that first. May we have the recommended actions.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I think the one comment that I two comments that I do want to make is the first one is that the next meeting of the Howl Day Board of Education is a business meeting and it will be held on Tuesday, number four fifth. At six thirty here in the middle school, high school library of the health of our district. Just like we did tonight, we'll take an immediate recess to do a Q and A session with the public about the 2024 Capital Project Bond referendum vote. I think the only other comment that I have is we have a number of students here this evening to recognize and it's always very, very nice to be able. To do that, but first the superintendent comment.
Sure, I have just a few brief comments and then we will get to the student recognition. Last board meeting, I mentioned that the state has has rolled out a regionalization plan. The Board of Regions voted on it and last week we had representatives from State Ed meet with all of the regional superintendents. So it was the Deputy Commissioner for Policy and the Assistant Commissioner for Policy. And they gave us a bit more detail about the process and I share here at a board meeting because ultimately the board will make decisions about this. So as I mentioned last meeting by November first, the districts are required to submit an application to New York State. There's a lot of data involved. It's everything from student performance, student enrollment numbers. Courses, number of athletic activities, extracurricular activities. It's a pretty comprehensive look at each school district. We're working on that. Mr. Josh Elder is leading it, but all of our admin team is contributing. Once that's in place, over the following months, they're going to pull together all the district superintendents from from all the BOCs throughout the state. They're going to be analyzing that data and then they will develop what what is going to be called an interim progress document for all districts. So they'll they'll be looking at what are districts doing to leverage opportunities to partner with other districts, to leverage their their local BOCs. And to do things that either create efficiencies for school districts or opportunities for students. Then with that information, by October first, so a year, basically a year from now. Then every district will be required to to develop a final regionalization plan and implement it in the following school year. So you would have your plan, set up your goals, there would be it would be ahead of a budget process. You'd have time because some of this may may have a budget impact and implemented in twenty six, twenty seven. But just to say, you know, I think. Howl Dane, in my opinion, is in very good shape because we do think out of the box and have a lot, a lot of partnerships and just to name a few. We have partnerships with BOCs. We have children that if we don't have a special education program here, we use BOCs and partners with some other school districts. We use BOCs for career and technical education programs that we're just not large enough to offer. You know, things like automotive, construction, trades, cosmetology, culinary and many more. Additionally, we have part partnership with the Garrison School, which I think is a good example of what the state is looking for. Where we have a program and it's there are Howl Dane students as well as Garrison students and it is housed at Garrison. At some point, it actually may relocate here to Howl Dane. Other examples are we we do PD with other school districts. We have a learning differences committee with Garrison and and Howl Dane. Sports mergers with a half a dozen districts, Brewster, Proton, Portland, Garrison, Peak Skill, Yorktown. So if we don't have a particular sport, we really go out of our way to try to make sure students have opportunities by partnering with other districts. We also look for shared transportation opportunities. We board, I think, approved an agreement. It may have been back in June or July. Where if there's the ability to partner with the district, share transportation costs, we do. You know, engage in that type of collaboration as well. So my understanding from the state representatives are these are the types of things they are looking for. They probably will come down with some recommendations. I think it's always important to listen. Maybe there are things that we haven't thought of, but I have to say, just what I summarized there and I probably missed some. Howl Dane is doing a very good job of looking for opportunities. Maybe part of that is also because we're smaller, you know, larger districts maybe aren't forced to to look for these opportunities because they have, you know, maybe more, more opportunities and more programs in house. So any questions about that?
I was just curious to know who who's making the recommendations. First of all, who's who's assessing the material that we submit? And then do you have like a range of the kinds of recommendations that they might make that either do apply to us or would apply to other districts?
That's the very question that the superintendent posed to the state representatives. And basically what they said, I'm paraphrasing here, but that. We're gathering information, so this is not top down. We want to listen to all of our districts and learn from what districts are doing. Maybe what they're not doing, then work with the BOCs, regional superintendents. And come back with recommendations later. So so I would think, you know, that that will happen sometime in the spring. And then it'll inform our plan and and again, by October first next year.
Right.
We'll have to have a plan in place.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, and I mean, just if you don't mind to put a little context in this, New York State is an unusual state in that we have so many very, very, very small school districts. A lot of states have forced their school districts to go to, for example, countywide school districts. Or they forced other kinds of mergers. New York State, in my opinion, has really taken the opposite. Approach where to for two districts to merge, both districts have to really want it. And so merging is has been a hard thing to do. And yet, at the same time, when you have so many small districts, you do have some real issues of. Of equity because students don't have the same, in some cases, may not have the same kinds of opportunities as in others. So it's an interest. It's interesting to me that this is how New York State is going about this. So I didn't know this was news to me.
Yeah, it it was rolled out rather quickly.
It seems that way.
We feel like now we have a better understanding of it that the state representatives were here. And they did say there there may be some opportunities to to change policy, you know, based on what they learned from this process. They're willing to change policy that may be able to incentivize more collaboration. So it it seems like a positive initiative. So with that, the next thing I just want to recognize, and I know it's it's come up a few times here at this meeting because the board approved. The Lori Isler Outdoor Classroom. Anyone that's been up, you know, towards the the Mabel Merit buildings. Just on the side, you see this beautiful outdoor classroom. And I I think it's because it it's not being used yet. We're getting very close, but. I think I'd like to just thank everyone who contributed to making this possible. Lori Isler, as we know, was was a beloved teacher here here in Howl Dane. And I think a special thanks to her sister, Jeannie Isler Melitz. Who really organized the fundraising behind it. Adam McNeil and our facilities team did all the site work and they did an excellent job. They were collaborating with with two professional carpenters. John Lee and Dan Uppham are our parents, but they're also professional carpenters and they put this together. And we're extremely collaborative and diligent in their work. So I know our principals, we had some discussion this morning about maybe a ribbon cutting ceremony. I think they're going to reach out to the Isler family. We brought students and some staff and then start enjoying this this beautiful outdoor space. So again, thanks to everyone who contributed to that wonderful initiative. Lastly, I just want to briefly recognize our school board. It is School Board Recognition Week throughout New York State for those who who aren't aware of that. And I think we owe a lot of gratitude to our five board members who worked tirelessly. They're here, you know, two evenings a month at least. But to be prepared for this meeting, there are many, many hours behind the scenes that that the public just doesn't see, but they need to be prepared to vote on on a wide range of issues. Part of establishing the School Board Recognition Week is to raise awareness of the important work that the board members do. New York State School Boards Association summarizes some of their responsibilities and I emphasize some. But they create a shared vision for the future of education for the district. They set the district's direction to promote the highest levels of student achievement. They ensure accountability for student performance outcomes. They develop and present annual budgets that reflect the needs of both the students and the district and also the community. They align resources strategically to drive continuous improvement in the school district. And they support the district's positive culture to foster productive learning and working environments. Now, if that's not enough, as you heard earlier before this meeting, there's been about two years of planning that have gone into this capital project initiative. And I, you know, I I walked into it only three months ago, but it has been very, very well thought out. And the board really deserves tremendous credit and even now they are working. Peggy and Maggie join me on a weekly meeting with the architects and the project managers. And Sean, I think you were involved in the early planning phases and Ezra, maybe, you know. Michelle, I know you're getting involved now in your first year. So I just want to say thank you. And and although I've only been working with you for three months, I really respect the hard work. You are a very hands-on and engaged board. The community is lucky to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to fit the theme of our year.
Very good.
That's cute.
Thank you for helping us build a better Howl Dane. It's very sweet. No, Megan always.
Love it.
That's great.
Sun is.
All you need is a treat for the circus.
All right. All right, so now we're moving into our student recognitions to begin with. Yeah.
So. I wish there were in multiple games today. We don't have any. I was hoping, but I do know there are a lot of games. Um, so last year at this time, we recognized four students who were additional National Merit Scholars and recognized by College Board.
So that you can be seen.
Camera.
So I'll look at it a little bit. So. Last, actually, last meeting, we recognized four students. Two students are semi-finalists for National Merit and two students are commended students for National Merit. But in addition to that, now College Board also recognizes five other categories. And last year, we had students who qualified in one of those categories and it was small town. This year, we have students who qualify in three categories. We have students who qualify as first time. Students that are going to college within their families. And we have students of Hispanic descent who are going to college that are being recognized based upon their scores on College Board assessments. So this year, we actually had fifteen students that would be recognized that fall into those three categories. Last year, we had four students and they only found into that one category. So I just want to name all of the students that fall into the different categories this year. Amelia Allian, who's who's not here, Dahlia Beck, Dusty Berkeley. Now you start to hear the boys soccer game students, Owen Cutie, Edwin Dubroff, Mark Furpo, Josie Foley Hedlund. Lincoln McCarthy, Kira Shanahan, Matt Salhavi, Ashley Sosa and Zane Del Pozo. So those are the students that are not here, but the students who are here this evening that are being recognized. We have Scotia Hartford is here. If Scotia wants to come on up. And they are an outflow of order, I think.
Mrs. Mitchell.
So.
You can stay up. And we have Seth Luden Pax. And we have Caroline Simpson. And we will make sure we get the rest of these awards to the student.
Like to take to take a quick photo.
Right outside.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to be.
I also mentioned that Seth has started a science and math club at Howl Dane and they are going to New York, uh, no, yeah, New York City to compete.
Oh, right.
These all seniors? We're never in pictures.
Those are all seniors?
I mean, that's that.
Freshmen are freshmen are invited to join. We're not doing the whole school board with photos, are we?
I don't think so.
Maybe, I don't know. Everybody's. Yeah.
To Los Angeles.
Oh, really? Good for him.
Do they? Are these all seniors? All these kids are seniors?
No, those those three are seniors.
Yeah.
There are four on here that are.
Four.
Yeah.
So eleven of them are. Are.
Lincoln. Zane.
So what?
Two.
Two, two are juniors.
That is only junior.
That's unreal.
You know, we don't have huge classes, so it's not like we have like, you know, like three hundred students. So the percentage, the percentage numbers are phenomenal.
And if you go and you look at what the scores, I mean, it's all public information in terms of kind of where you need to be in order to qualify.
Right. Time. Yeah, this is great achievement. It's incredible.
All right, so now actually. We get to hear from our student advisor.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're here.
So I'm Scotia Hartford. I am the Student Body Secretary. And I just wanted to speak on last Friday, October eleventh was our third annual Fall SAT and PSAT Day. So freshmen were able to take the opportunity to do grade level team bonding. At the Sharp Reservation and sophomores, juniors and seniors had the opportunity to take the PSAT or SAT. And seniors were also given multiple options for future career paths as well to explore. So they could job shadow, visit a college or attend a college essay workshop with Ms. Martinez and Ms. Linda. And seniors, the seniors have also had multiple access points in guidance along the post-high school. Endeavors and. They've also seen a lot of increasing support just from our guidance staff as well, especially because of our new addition with Ms. Heinzman. She's been an amazing addition to our guidance faculty, just giving focus guidance to our freshmen and sophomores. And this has also allowed Ms. Cottin to free up some time and center a lot of needed attention for our senior sort of buying with approaching deadlines. And with that, most seniors are applying early decision one or early action, so their deadlines are. Just passed this week or are coming around this corner. So. We've been very busy trying to get those applications submitted. And even students who are applying early decision two and have later deadlines. They have been finding a lot of guidance and support from Howl Dane faculty such as the annual Fall SAT College Visit and Reading Workshop Day. Um, and as well, this week is Homecoming Week. So the Student Council has planned a lot of fun activities and theme days this year. Today was Run With That Reason Day, so I was Wild West and Callie was under arrest. So that's just an example of how that day. A lot of students picked a partner and dressed as Orion's name. It was a lot of fun. There was a lot of school spirit in the hallway and we hope to see that continuing throughout the week as well. So tomorrow's Country versus Country Club where you dress up as if you're going to the country club or if you're from the country. Thursday is our Great Theme Day and Friday is our Blue and White or Senior Shirt Day. And. So the theme day will look like this is what was scheduled by all of our Student Council representatives. Fire freshman, sporting sophomores, Jack Pudge juniors and sleepy seniors. And to foster Howl Dane's spirit for our pep rally on Friday, freshmen, sophomores and juniors were blue and white. And seniors were one of their class of twenty twenty five shirts. During the pep rally, students will set up for a lot of fun activities. Most of them are different from this, these past years, so it's very exciting to start some new traditions. One of that is is being the kindergarten meetup, which is our seniors. Meeting our kindergarten and first grade in the middle of the gymnasium during our pep rally and we're going to give them little mementos and goodies. So it's going to be very exciting. And I think it's also great just to show how close we are to our entire school district and so I'm very excited for that. Um, and. Let's see, um, our homecoming parade will also begin on Friday at six. And our girls varsity volleyball will be hosting their senior night and homecoming game at four fifteen. And then the boys varsity football game will follow at seven PM, all of this on Friday. Girls varsity tennis just had their homecoming match last Thursday. Girls varsity soccer will have their homecoming and senior night tomorrow night at four forty five PM and the boys as well, but on Thursday at four thirty PM. Varsity Cross Country will also have their homecoming senior night events next week. And this Saturday is the Homecoming Dance and Sunday is the Hall of Fame Brunch. And we are so excited to see our Blue Devil Fred shine really bright this week with all of these new traditions and fun activities. And also I would love to say a big thank you to our Education Board, our Board of Education for the capital project. And I was involved in the video, so I'm seeing a lot of the planning and very excited. And unfortunately, I won't be able to see it, but I'm so excited for all the students who will be. And I think it's going to be a really great opportunity for our Howl Dane community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Am I taking some questions?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I so I have a question. I remember. So in years past, it seemed like, so you started by talking about like guidance and getting ready for like for college and college admissions. Are students still applying to a lot of colleges, like of the people you know, like on average, how many colleges do students usually apply to?
I mean, I feel like our our guidance, like Ms. Caution has told us like the golden number is nine to twelve.
So that's really.
Yes.
Wow.
So a good number to give yourself, a lot of options, but also not overwhelming yourself. And I think from my experience, most of my peers are applying early decision, so they only have one deadline that they're working on right now. And they're having that binding contract and then they'll be getting the results back in December to get that early decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think a lot of students are applying early and then waiting to see the results and then applying regularly to all those other.
But the recommendation is nine to twelve, right? Thank you.
Could you do one thing? Could you just explain that, was it a day that you said about the PSATs and the SATs? And then, but the freshmen are doing something else, could you?
Freshmen are doing something fun.
Are you suggesting that standardized battery testing, not fun for the children? What? Take, take me through that because that sounds phenomenal that, you know, it's almost like this. Community atmosphere. The the way that you explained it is in my head incredible, but it can't be. Just take me through that.
Um, so I don't know if it's changed from the years that we've done it, but. We just basically took a field trip to Sharp Reservation or freshman year while all of the upperclassmen were doing like standardized tests.
Is this during like a school day or is this a weekend? I was like the weekend.
Yes, that's Fridays.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so they have the opportunity just to do some like gray level bonding because they don't really need to think about those. Standardized tests in college stuff just yet. So, um, yeah, just about fostering grade togetherness.
Ah, that's cool. It's a good idea. It's a good hit.
I think we've talked at different points about access, right? And access to the SATs and access to SAT. And not all school districts do this. But when you talk about being able to access the SAT. For a hundred dollars on a Saturday in what school district offers it and how are you going to get there? Do you have families that can bring you? There's just so many barriers for some families. And, you know, recognizing the PSAT not only fosters options for scholarships.
And merit scholarships.
Opportunities, but it also prepares students for the SATs. And I think we're seeing more and more schools are going back to require SATs, not being optional anymore.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's it's a day that if we were going to do PSATs for the sophomores and the juniors and SATs for the seniors. It makes sense to do a trip for the freshmen on that day. So it's a lot of organization, a lot of testing space, a lot of goes into the day. But I think it really benefits the students.
Yeah, that's awesome. What a cool opportunity.
So Scotia's debut in the referendum video will be released this week. Her insightful comments and, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you're grabbing.
All right, so now we're actually going into our workshop presentation.
You definitely don't need to say. Not that it's. Yeah, she could. Yes, we'll go under.
Oh, get get in there, Demis, or I cut you out there.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for having me. My name is Teresa Ellis. I am the External Auditor and Audit Supervisor with the Bonn and D O Group. We, we recently completed the audit and went over the audit reports in detail with your audit committee. And I'm here tonight to go over a high level summarized version of the audit results and answer any questions that you may have. First, I'd like to thank Catherine and all the business office for all of their assistance during the audit. They were very responsive to our requests and well-prepared to ensure a smooth audit. There are four deliverables that we will, we have provided to you. The first is your financial statement. The second is your audit of the extra classroom financial statements. The third is the required communications letter and the fourth is the management letter. The school district's annual audit of the financial statements includes the independent auditor's opinion on the financial statements. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance an auditor can give to you. The other reports that are included in your basic financial statements is the Government Auditing Standards Report. This report requires us to gain an understanding and report on your internal controls over your financial reporting. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the financial statement of financial reporting over internal controls. The second part of the report is your compliance with laws, regulations and grant contracts that are non-compliant that could lead to a material financial impact. We noted one non-compliance. The school district is limited to retaining four percent of the school budget in unreserved, unappropriated fund balance. And the district is over that limit at six point zero nine percent. We are also issuing the school districts. We are also issuing the school district's annual audit of the extra classroom financial statements. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. Again, an unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance an auditor can give you. So that's a very high-level, you know, overview of your audit results. Again, I would like to thank the business office for all of their assistance throughout the audit. I'm open to any questions that you may have at this time.
Ezra and I were, both attended the, the most recent committee meeting, and this isn't a question so much as just a, a more gratitude to you and to the staff for their wonderful, continued wonderful work, and also to acknowledge that our current Chair, Roman, down in office, this is going to be his final year, and it's always, it's always wonderful when we have people in the committee who stand up to provide support and oversight, and just wanna speak his name into the room for all of his great work. Thank you.
On the committee for a long time.
Yes, he has, yeah.
Yeah. And even that overage, you know, they talked about in, in the, you know, in our meeting. You know, Catherine had understood every, you know, all, all the parts, it all made sense. So kind of the way that worked out, it, it, it was just kind of that, that year. But other than that, I mean, the, the team overall, I mean, our meeting was incredibly well-organized, and it was, by the end, it was like, okay. We went through each one of those sheets. Sumaries were excellent. And it seems that the, the business office had done just really phenomenal, so. Really appreciate it.
It's always nice to hear from the auditors how cooperative and well-organized the business office is. It's really, you know, we, we, we certainly experience them that way, but to know that other people do as well. Right. And actually, Catherine, this was the issue, this, the unappropriated fund balance. This is what we talked about earlier in the year, right? And really primarily being due to higher-than-expected interest rates, which are really a good thing.
Our revenues exceeded our budget primarily due to increased income, income, in, interest income. And we also, since we moved the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the capital reserve, we, you know, we have that expenditure that, you know, lowered our fund balance. That, yeah, so between the two things together, but it's, you know, does happen. The auditors always tell us it does happen, so.
Very rarely for us, and it's not a, it's a, but, but both of the opinions for the financial statement and the extra classroom, gen, and unmodified. Yeah, so that's fantastic.
Rarely for us, but you know, I worked plenty of years in the union, and there are districts that have plenty of overages, but we don't. Pretty impressive, you know, Howden continues to be a good steward of the community's funds, and the business office holds to it pretty well.
And, you know, the next step is you'll, we'll do a corrective action plan, which will just explain how it happened and how, you know, how we plan to have it not happen again. And, you know, primarily, we're gonna, in May, put forward a proposition to the voters to increase our limit that we can have in our capital reserve. And that would, you know, so we can start resaving, we had hit our cap of a million dollars being able to be held in the capital reserve. So I wasn't able to fund anymore, but, you know, this time next year, if the voters do approve that to, you know, raise our threshold, we'd be able to put any excess fund balance into capital, which with the big, you know, bond referendum that we're doing, we know is a good place for us to have some extra funds.
And, and remind me that pub, the last time we did that same public vote was a decade ago? Ten years ago?
Uh, it was.
Or was it less than that? We're required.
Twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen, something like that.
About a decade, but about a decade.
Great.
So, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Catherine.
Thank you, Teresa.
And thank you to Teresa. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
So we're now at the first communication from the public. So the Howden Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. This first public comment session is reserved for comments on special presentations and active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, we'd ask you to sign in and state your name for the record and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. The board discourages despair, the district discourages disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel. And while we wouldn't engage in dialogue, please know that we're listening, and we'd ask you to leave your contact information with our district clerk, Megan Shields, for prompt follow-up from either myself or the superintendent. So next on our agenda are our Administrator Information Reports. The board thanks, as always, the administrators for the really informative report that we get every month for our workshop meeting. And now we're going to move into Consent Agenda Minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Consent Agenda Financial, right, so what we have here is the, basically accepting, all we have this right now is accepting the audit report that we just heard described to us, so may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And Consent Agenda Personnel. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And now up to unfinished business. So, yeah, so I haven't confirmed the date for the Friday of, what, I think nineteen?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. I haven't confirmed November twenty-second yet, but I haven't heard Lynn. I've been talking with Lynn Allen, and she hasn't said, no, I'm having a conversation with her tomorrow morning to plan it. And just as a reminder, the retreat will be focused on the superintendent search, right? Well, that was always our plan. We'd get through the Capital Project Bond Referendum, and then we'd turn our attention to the superintendent search. And so we'll, we'll do that right away, and I'll have more news about that at our next meeting.
Who is Lynn Allen?
Oh, Lynn Allen? So Lynn Allen is one of the assist, I'm sorry, I should make sure you knew that. Lynn Allen is one of the Assistant Superintendents of BOCES, and so one of the services. Yes, and I apologize for that. So one of the services that we get, and it's, I mean, it's not free, because we pay BOCES for their services, but one of the services that BOCES offers to, to us are, are things like overseeing retreats. And Lynn has done, well, Lynn and then another of the former, now retired Assistant Superintendents, they've done several of our retreats, and they, they do a nice job, and it's nice, because they know us, and now they're gonna get to know you, and, and we know them, and it's, it's nice to do it with someone that we have a relationship with. Great, thanks for asking. And new business, we have the CST, CPSC recommendations. May we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Interim Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We now have our second opportunity for communication from the public. This could be about any school district matter.
I just wanna clarify, I had an error that Scotia caught on my board report in that Scotia is actually the treasurer of the National Honor Society, and Amelia Alian is the treasurer. I had them. So, for the record, I will correct it.
So Board Time Board Reflections, does anybody have any reflections?
Well, since Dr. Kation stayed, I didn't, I wanted to reference something that was in her report that sort of speaks to our, our desire to be collaborative, that I, I noticed in, in your report that we're working with Garrison on integrating and training in a very particular way to manage kids that might be having self-regulatory issues of one kind or another in a safe and consistent way. And as a, as the parent of a child who oftentimes has self-regulatory issues, it, it gives the parents great comfort to know that there is a way to manage those behaviors when they either become potentially dangerous to themselves or others. And just to know that we're, we continue to be committed to the sort of least restrictive kinds of interventions so that everyone both feels safe and that we can kind of move through our days. And that, we're having that conversation with Garrison, I think, is great, since we're sharing students across that, so.
I, I, where I parked to come to the meeting is actually right under the, the, I guess, the Lori Isler Memorial Outdoor Classroom, and it is really, it is really lovely. It's such a nice resource, because the campus is so beautiful, and it's in a really nice place, and so that was nice to see. And then Mr. Albona did a really nice job talking about, going back to his comments and talking about regionalization. You know, I just really want to reiterate that, as long as I have been on the board, the district has worked very hard to really find ways that we can collaborate with our closest other district partners to, again, both increase efficiencies and find cost savings, but all in the service of, of, of supporting a, a student achievement and student well-being, and it's, it's, it's great that we might even have some more support for doing that. So that's, that's. Any final thoughts, Mr. Albona?
Just a thank you to Catherine Platt for all her hard work on the audit. It's tremendous amount of time that goes into preparing and giving information for that final report. And, and our admin team, the students, I think, really, that says it all. You know, the, the accomplishments, you know, I'm only here three months, and I'm getting to know them, but many of the names, I've met them, and, and they're just so impressive. So congratulations, Stephen, and Scotia, I mean, what, what a great presentation. Yeah. Well done.
All right, so I move to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.